Tina is not, she's in Greece or something with her daughter. On some graduation trip. Greece, is it?
Yeah, that's what she told me.
That's what it's Greece.
Yeah, we can get going. Let me go grab the list.
I'd like to call to order the June 8 monthly business meeting of the Devil's Lake Water Improvement District. Let the record reflect that we have Directors Skervin, Green, Norris, and Sexton in attendance. Director French is out of the country, I believe, at this time. And so, I'd like to hear a motion to accept the consent agenda, please.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent, approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Consent agenda is passed. Comments from the citizens on agenda and non-agenda items? We have Mark Christie, is that correct? Okay. We will do that following comments from... Are there any comments of those that were unable to sign up? If you could come to the mic, please, Miles.
Miles Schlesinger, Lincoln City, Oregon. I would like to make a request of the Board. And I believe the next 12 months are very important for the Board and for our relationship with the city of Lincoln City. And I think that a Board member should be present at city council meetings once a month to give a brief update to what we are doing on the lake and invite them when necessary to go to a committee meeting or a Board meeting so that they are aware that the Board is competent and working diligently for the betterment of Lincoln City and the lake. And we have had a very bad reputation with the city of Lincoln City, as evidenced by the no food and beverage at the Devil's Lake Dash. And I think that promoting good visibility for the lake is an important aspect of your jobs. And I think we could do a better job at that. So, thank you.
All right, thanks, thanks, Miles. Are there any other comments from the audience before we get into our agenda? Josh, we have amended agenda tonight. Do you want to say a little bit of something about that?
We do, my apologies. We have the budget hearing scheduled for this evening for the 2017-2018 budget year. Some information has came up last minute as of today, and the Board and Budget Committee would like to review that information thoroughly before we do or do not make any changes to the final budget before it's accepted by the Board and the District. So, once again, my apologies for that, but we will be rescheduling it very soon.
Yeah, and rest assured, it's just a column question, not a financial problem at all. That's not the case. It just has to do with making sure that we, as we approach the 2017-2018 budget year, that we have our columns and stuff exactly the way they should be, so...
Absolutely. The state forms are very complex. They've even made a couple of new changes this year to them. So, we just want to make sure that all of our forms are consistent with our internal accounting.
Thank you, Josh. So, you can rest assured that we will have another, our actual budget hearing sometime between now and the 30th of June. Okay? Great, thanks. All right, budget, or excuse me, committee briefings. Do we have a sewer committee report? And I think we have a letter to approve.
Yes, we do. Well, speaking of the letter, yeah, that's the next step for the letter is to settle on the dates in July and August for the workshop. So far, the conflict dates we have, it'll have to be a Saturday. The conflict dates that we have are July 22 and July, I mean, August 19, is that? I'm doing that from memory. But basically, eclipse weekend in August. We don't want to be trying to have a workshop that weekend. The eclipse is on a Monday, so it's the Saturday before that.
So, that would be the 19th of August?
Okay. Then July 22, I know that both Josh and I have scheduling conflicts. So, that, July 22 would appear to be out. So, are there any, are there any conflict with any other Saturdays in either July or August for Board members?
I, I think I'm fine any Saturday of those two months, so I'm good.
Okay, I don't hear anybody else saying that they...
Do...
Any, and also, speaking to future Board members...
Future Board members, do we have...
Do you have, either of you have...
Conflict?
Conflicts with any Saturday dates in July or August? Okay?
Of July.
It seems like we're all leaving.
Okay.
Okay, good, so that's, we already xed out that date, so...
So, do you want to pick some, pick a date then? Pick two dates?
Yeah, let's, why don't we, you know, it's already, what, June 8? We don't have the letter out yet, so...
Why don't you do 15th and the 12th? That's the weekend before each of them.
And that, that's fine by me.
I can, that can work for me, so...
Okay, July 15 and August 12.
I think those work fine.
Already. 1-5?
Yes.
How about July 29?
29th can work for me also. July.
All right, so, all right, July 29 and August 12, that might be, okay, that will...
It'll be two weeks apart.
We think that the college is available on both of those dates. We'll have to double check that. So, let me ask, so that, the 15th, so now what's, what's out is July...
15th.
15, 22, and August 19. And for some reason, there's a problem with getting the college for July 29 or August 12. We'll pick another Saturday, but it won't be the 15th.
It'll be the 26th of August.
It'll have to be the...
Unless you want to go...
It'll have to be the 26th. Well, or...
Or the 5th.
If we go to the...
Or the 8th of July.
8th is not...
That'd be too soon.
Well, I'm just thinking that we should try to schedule the meetings as far apart as possible so that we have time to get those things out. But if we get, how about if we get...
Well, then we could do the August 26th.
If, yeah, I was going to say that, why don't we, if we can get the 29th of July, then is August 26th good with the Board and Josh?
Yes.
Okay, still, so that would be preferable.
Okay. July 29th and August 26th, it is. Okay. That will basically conclude the, the letter. I'll get it to, oh, you saw my email about CASA printing, folding, mailing. But it just did not include postage, but I thought that was pretty reasonable. About 450 bucks.
Something like that.
Total for printing, envelopes, envelopes printed, mailing labels, stuffing. It did not include postage. I don't know how we do better than that. It also includes a little banner on the outside of the envelope saying, you know, "Important Dash Sewer Information Enclosed," something like that to get, so it doesn't look like a throwaway with the... Oh, and a way to print the envelopes rather than using address labels, which looks a little better. So, anyway. So, I'm happy just to front that and I'll present a bill for reimbursement when we get it done.
Okay, that sounds fine.
Okay, next, I had a couple of updates for the, for the website. The Voyage, the Sewer, Voyage Lake Sewer LID. I sent those out. It's just that, that, the webpage, that topic on the webpage was just woefully out of date. It did not indicate that the project had been completed when it was completed, you know, about a year ago. So, I just basically just added an update and a couple of documents that, you know, show how, how it was completed. That they can be... Josh, those, what I added is not, you know, I don't know how to create a link. But, so I, I put what looks like a link, except it's not. It's just the, how you could describe the link.
Gotcha.
Okay, but it needs to be built, however you do that.
Okay. I will look at it, and if it's beyond my web mastery, I will contact our IT professionals.
Okay, and also, that, okay, and then the other thing was a little revision slash update of the sewer project page. Basically, just, pretty much just highlighting the, better the overview, which is pretty much the meat of the sewer project page now, anyway.
Yeah, and that's, that's the new overview that we just...
Yeah, just, yeah, May 2017 overview. And that is the same thing. It's, it's in the body. It's right underneath the Devil's Lake Sewer System Pre-Design Report. It looks like it's a link, but I just typed it like that. It's not a real link. It needs to be created, okay?
I got you.
All right.
I'll make it so if you click it, it does something.
Yeah. Neat. Okay, sewer, I have to announce that I think we need to postpone the sewer, well, cancel for the time being, our sewer committee meeting for tomorrow. Reason being that I, I didn't realize the conflict till a couple of days ago that, okay, until, actually, this morning. That I'm going to be in court in Salem tomorrow at meeting time, so I can't be there. And Mitch Moore is at his daughter's wedding rehearsal dinner in Denver.
Oh.
And so, I think we just had to cancel it. And we'll either postpone or just meet again at a regular scheduled time in July. You know, really what we need to do now is just get the website updated like we just talked about and get the letter out. And that doesn't take a meeting, so if we can accomplish those two things, you know, I don't, I don't think we have, I think we need to get those things done. And then we'll start meeting about some substance. There was, well, anyway. So, that, I think that's all I have to report with respect to sewer committee activity.
And then you'll have a meeting prior to the workshop in July then, so...
Yeah, and we talked about creating a agenda for the, for the workshop at the, at a meeting that we have not had yet, so...
Okay. Very good, thanks, Brian. Let's see, Special Projects, Events, and Communications Committee, Mark?
What I've given here is the owner's safety information that we were kind of in charge of putting together. This is both for the committee as well as the Neighborhood Association. And this will, this is up on our, will be up on our website. This ties into the meeting I have with Deputy Marine Sheriff, Brian Bruce.
Thanks, Mark. Sir?
Anyway, we had a great committee meeting today. There were probably 20 to 25 of us, I think. And so, I'll give you a brief recap of that. That was, the information I just provided you was also included in there. Discussed E. coli, Bill kind of gave us a report on that. And then Mary and her group talked about the measurements they've taken at the culvert as well as at our buoy that happens to be out in front of our little inlet going out to the lake. And the readings are extremely high at the culvert. And so, one of the decisions that we made as a committee as far as continuing that process to investigate is Bill's going to contact the county, share with the county our findings on how hot that culvert area is and where that goes into the lake and those readings there also, and see if we can build a relationship with the county where they can work on those issues upstream of the lake. And so, we'll start that dialogue with them. So, that was one of the things we chatted about in our committee meeting. The other thing we chatted about, Brian and I had an email dialogue, oh, a couple of days ago, and this evolves around the aeration subject. And what Brian was wanting to do, I guess it's in the charter of, which covers a number of different topics, of the Special Projects Committee. And as you all know, we combined both the Special Projects and Special Events Committee into one committee. And I think Steve Brown will speak to some housekeeping items that I think we need to take care of sometime over the next couple of months with respect to the combining of those two committees to make sure that we're aligned there. But given the aeration purview and Brian's request to speak directly to that as far as should our committee, what I told them is we'd talk about it as a committee, make a, make a decision whether we thought it made sense for the committee to take on aeration as a project. And so, we had, we actually had a very good dialogue, I believe. And what the committee unanimously decided was that, and so I'm presenting that information to you, is that the Board has done a fantastic job. You've moved, you know, we've been working on aeration now for a couple of years. You know, we've expended funds. We're getting it narrowed down to where we're getting close to, much closer than we ever have been before to implementation. And we just feel it would be counterproductive for our committee or any committee to be formed specific around aeration. We really believe that we would get in the way of the progress you've already made. And we, as a committee, are committed to having you continue to go down that same path. I think one of the things I shared with Brian in my email communication is that our recommendation might be that you have one or two workshops as we get closer to the final product of what that aeration system's going to look like, where that workshop is interactive like you've done in the past couple of workshops where there's dialogue between folks, participants in the audience as well as Board members. And so, that, that was our decision as a committee. You guys ultimately get to make that final decision. But we did discuss it at great length and feel you guys have done a great job moving aeration forward, so... The other thing that we chatted about, and I want to bring to light and congratulate the, the committee members, which most of them were, for their, their efforts a couple of weeks ago in our first cleanup project on East Devil's Lake, East Devil's Lake Road. And Cassie Rudd did a great job at writing an article that appeared in the News Guard. We've got some great, great pictures. I think Bill and Kent and then a number of our, our friends in the audience participated in that. Got a lot of garbage, and that was Kent's original brainchild. And the things we discussed today, we're coming up with the next project that we might do. So, Julie offered to contact the city. We talked about maybe doing the west side, which the city be involved in. I think the county was very pleased at, at what we did as a group. And so, we want to continue that good work. And it might tie into a 4th or 5th of July. We're going to try to push it out so we can encompass a lot of things that might be. End up being still a lake cleanup as well as doing the west side. So, hats off to, off to our group. The other thing we talked about is trying to figure out a way to, and Georgia offered this with the radio station to get communication out because we really want to engage many of the community in assisting in this cleanup process, not, not just committee members, although that's great. So, we need to find, find and figure out different ways of engaging the community so we can get more people involved in making our surrounding lake and lake a great place. Let's see, I think there might have been... And then what I handed out to you were the, around safety, the July 3 boat parade as well as fireworks, kind of list of things to be noting as far as if you're boating or you have supps or any type of other communication. Mitch did a great job, I believe. For the most part, that's what we had publicly, publicly put out last year, and we'll do that again. Officer Brewster was kind enough to review that and thought that was great and didn't have any additions. As you can see by the information on the boat parade, he, he will again be leading the boat parade. So, we're, we're excited about his participation in, in that event. And then Miles gave us an update on the permitting process for allowing beverage carts and drink carts at Regatta Park. And that appears to be moving forward. And hopefully, we'll have some resolution that will allow that to happen sooner than later. So, again, great, great team members, great group of committee members. And I think we're making a positive difference for the Devil's Lake Water Improvement District Board that we're representing in this effort, so...
Couple of clarifications, Mark. When you talk about E. coli, well, I know that, that we've, we've started monitoring the lake and the tributaries too. We've continued doing that. And just so that everyone understands that during the past, past years, we've taken E. coli readings weekly. And that has begun and continued. We've done three different readings as of today. And we've, we've found that we've had higher E. coli ratings in Thompson Creek and sometimes Rock Creek too. But then, the Board in a discussion that we had this spring, we, the SOS and Water Quality Monitoring Committee recommended that we change some of the, the test sites and to reflect really what's happening in the lake. And what you're talking about is what's happening in the, in the tributary Thompson Creek itself. And we, I know that the testing has, has taken place and had higher levels have been recognized at those historic...
Yes.
Testing places. But out in the lake itself, then those, those tests have shown that, hey, by the time we test actually in the lake, there's no problem at all with E. coli. And so, I just wanted to make that clear.
Right, yeah. Yeah, where we, where we do have a little bit of an issue, it's not, it's not red. I think it's green, still bordering, in, still in the safe zone.
It's still in the safe zone.
Farther, farther down, you know, going out to that outlet where we've got actually a no wake buoy, that's a little higher level than, than what we find generally in the rest of the lake. So, and again, it's being all fed from that culvert area up, up in, outside of the lake. But it's still important to note that. And we, we still need to do our due diligence as a committee and see if we can engage the county to mitigate that in some way.
Right, I just want to make sure that everybody in the audience understands that, that the, the levels of E. coli that, that we test for throughout the lake, they've all been in the, in the safe zone.
Correct.
And so, that's the key, is that we're making sure that we're monitoring what's happening in the lake.
Which is great news.
We do know that, that there is a problem with a couple of our tributaries in the higher E. coli that feeds the lake, but by the time it gets into the lake...
It dissipates, yeah.
It dissipates.
No, that's correct, and that's been historically the case also, so...
Okay.
Definitely nothing new, but we just feel it's, it's important to see if we can engage the county in trying to, to see if we can make that less impactful even as it comes into the lake, so...
Okay.
Anything else?
And, and then, really what you're saying for the, for the aeration, the committee doesn't want to take that on, that you're here in a support of what's taking place currently by the Board and we're headed down the right place, I guess.
That is, that is correct.
Perfect.
Yeah, let me, let me say that I, you know, I, I really kind of agree with that. You know, the, the general idea behind the committees is to maybe, you know, help with stuff that the Board isn't, it's kind of peripheral to the, and to help the Board with issues that the Board isn't specifically focused on. Or maybe to do some work that, instead of the Board having to do everything. And just get some more community involvement. But, I mean, the Board has had such hands on the aeration project that, you know, I get, I get the idea. It just, on the other hand, it seemed odd that, as important as it is, there wasn't anything happening at the committee level, you know? So, I was kind of looking at it that way. But, you know, I, I told Mark and his committee that, you know, I, if I did join, it was just because aeration was in their charter. And, and I, and if I did join, I'd be pretty exclusively focused on aeration and not the many other good things that they're doing. Not because they're not important and good, but just because I didn't feel like I could add much to all the other stuff that they're doing, so... But I'm really comfortable in just being able to communicate with, with... with, with you board members is just a, a, a common, maybe knowledgeable citizen involved in the aeration, and interested in aeration project for many years. And so I'm, I'm comfortable with what you, what you decided.
Well, you guys are doing a great
Kind of relieved I don't have to join the committee.
You guys are doing a great job.
One last thing, Mark. Is, is there something planned? I know last year, after the Fourth of July fireworks, we had a lake cleanup.
Yep.
Are we planning on doing something along those lines again?
So, we, we are in the process of trying to determine a date and actually a project. I, I did read that in the, in the article. So I go, Kent already committed us to that. So, but, but the committee itself is, because of the date and the time, and I think we did it on the 5th last year, I can't, it was a day after the
Right.
fireworks. We're thinking we might not be prepared to do an organized thing. And in, I believe what we'll end up doing, although Sol was a great experience, this, what we did this last time was really done on our own. We, we involved and engaged the county, but it was done as a DLWID committee project. And, and it worked out completely successful. And we want to work on engaging the city this time on the west side. And we feel by doing it that way, we can engage the county and the city and really, you know, hopefully get community involvement and showing folks that we, as a committee, and folks that love the lake and surrounding the lake, do a great job at, at keeping it clean also. And, and the folks that participated in that, Bill included, and, and everybody behind me, and, and you too, I think did a great job. And now every time you drive by, I know, I, I hear, somebody dumped a, threw a piece of garbage.
I, I do recognize those things. I know.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Appreciate it. Let's see. Save Our Shorelines Committee Report?
Well, first, I'd like to thank Mark and Kent for giving my report already. We met at four o'clock today, had substantially fewer members on our committee than, than the projects committee. And I'd like to suggest that we alphabetize the committee report, so I don't have to follow Mark.
Okay.
Okay. And I'd like to reiterate what was, what was told. We do a pre-lake test on Thompson Creek at the culvert by the road. That's usually quite high from animal residue coming down the creek. And then we take another test in the lake at the buoy out past Mark's house. And it's usually in green or slightly yellow. On Rock Creek, we take it at the road on the last bridge before you get to the mall. And on the non-lake side, because it's deeper and you can bend over and get a test. So that's the pre-lake on Rock Creek. And then we take it about four feet out from the rushes, where the lake, where the creek comes into the lake mostly. And it's always green. So we have either a great filtration or dilute, dilution action going on there.
How far is it in between the road and where you take it in the lake?
Distance. It's out past all the greenery, about four feet out from there.
From the shoreline?
From the greenery that's out from the shoreline, because you can't get to the shoreline right there. Yeah.
I don't know how
So we just pull the boat in.
It's that
That's got to be at least 300 yards.
I was gonna, I was gonna say at least 100 yards, but
So there's a good filtration distance there for dilution and filtration through those, through that greenery. So we get, we get good tests on Rock Creek, a little bit less tests, but good enough, you know, like Mark said.
Do you test out in front of that, where it comes into the lake?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
That's, you have to walk out at the shoreline, or you get by boat?
Boat. Yeah. The only three tests that we don't do by boat is at the culvert, and at the Rock Creek Bridge, and at the hotel by the gauge that you read also.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah. So we had a level of 9.64 yesterday. Is that what you had out?
I called 6.6, but
Yeah. It might have gone down a little bit. So in total, we're doing 14 samples. We've added the, the marina, about two feet out from the dock there. Haven't done it yet, because I forgot to add it to the list before I left. But we, so we do 14 tests and a control, the tap water from the lab. And that always comes out pretty good, luckily. Any questions about the water quality testing? Yes?
Where is the furthest north, north point that you test? Is it near the golf course, or is it on the Nyatso side?
Case, K Street?
K Street. Yep.
You don't go towards the golf course area, like Blue Heron Landing?
Yeah. Blue Heron is the one we added.
Okay. So where do you test there?
Right off the dock.
At Blue Heron?
At the mar, at the marina. Yeah.
I was just kind of curious. Is to the inflow north of Blue Heron Landing, where it comes, there's a culvert at the north end, where it comes through, but whether or not it's a test site or
Yeah, we've never, historically, that hasn't been tested, even at Blue Heron. So we added that, just to get down there a little bit. Because we've got the K Street is down in the
That's on the other side of the finger?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Josh, you want to give us a, a report on our special projects, or our projects that are up there? Any, any updates on those, on our Devils Lake sediment removal, all the aeration student intern?
We do have a couple of updates. One of them's right here, but I'll, I'll get to that down the list. The sediment removal project with the large Airstream Pro unit that we've had up at the marina has been working out well so far. Thanks to Bill, we went out there and repositioned it a little bit to test one little spot while we're out there. However, we're working right now on getting it over to the Horseshoe Bay area. Excuse me. I think we discussed this briefly in the last board meeting about water clarity testing versus the depth of the sediment. And if we're going to get any movement there, be able to use it as a tool to move that sediment around. And what I have done is purchased a piece of equipment called a sludge judge, which is basically a classic, plastic tube that's marked off in 12-inch intervals. I've got about 25 feet of this section. So I'm going to see if that works to get down into those lighter sediments, so we can quantify some of these locations as far as the depth of the sediment versus the depth of the water. That's going to be especially important as we use this larger Airstream unit in that area, both before, during, and after. If this equipment works out well to monitor that sediment depth, then we'll have a better picture at whether or not, not only this equipment is affecting the sediment or influencing it, but also, just in general, have a tool to monitor that in specific areas where we've had problems, especially around the canals and some of these other areas that are historically inundated with the, these sediments. We're also going to test with our, our brand new wonderful YSI XO2 probe and suite, which is in, I'm currently setting up in the office. So that is another great and wonderful update. Setting up with a handheld unit and all the sensors and probes. So we'll very soon have a better picture of, of our lake and, and the water, as far as the, the nutrient content and the chemical characteristics. So we'll use that in tandem with this project and others, of course, as well. The aeration project is on track. I am scheduling another meeting between John Tucci of Lakesavers. He's been kind of an outside consultant with some of the information here. And we're going to have that very soon, this month, have a Q and A session with the board to fill us in on some, some information, so we can make a, a better and more informed choice as to what direction we want to go, as far as the scale of the system and, and what type of system we want to have in the lake.
Do you, do you have a date on that yet?
It's going to be the 22nd or 23rd. I have still got to get that email out, too. Of, of June, so this month.
Is that going to be by Skype again, that they're
Yeah, yeah. Zoom meeting there at Community College, like we did last time. So that's agreeable to everyone. June 22nd or 23rd. I haven't gotten it confirmed with.
You can do those by video. It's video and audio, right?
Yeah. You don't even have to be at the Community College to participate. And you can be looped in to, to at least one end of that interaction. So
Right.
conference in.
Okay.
And then you can also do phone on that as well. So even if you don't have a computer, you can dial in a number. So it's, it's pretty useful little setup they have there. That brings me to our next, and I think one of our more important project updates, our new student intern, Whitney Rich, who is helping us with our, our sampling efforts already in the lake, and has a lot of great ideas on deck, as far as some community outreach activities and some other things that we can get going here within the district. And what you'd like to say?
Okay. I'm a student at Whitman College. I'm currently studying environmental studies, geology, and Spanish. And I'm really excited to work with the Water Improvement District this summer, taking samples, learning how to use the equipment, and helping with community outreach, like Josh said. So excited to work with all of you. Thank you.
Thanks, Whitney.
Thanks, Whitney. And our last project update is our website. I've been trying to incorporate this into our monthly board meetings, so we can kind of get a, a feel of what changes we're making, for, for good or bad, on the website, as far as number of people. The numbers have kind of leveled off at the moment, so we're not really making any gains. They're not dropping off a lot either. We do have a few planned changes and updates in the works here this next month or two that we're going to roll out. So hopefully, we can get that back into a positive trend and get even more people using Dilwood.org.
Okay. Great. Thanks, Josh. Next, under new business. This last, I'm trying to think, was it a couple of weeks ago, we met as an executive session and did a quarterly lake manager's review. In that review, I think, generally speaking, that the, the board was, at least from my point of view, thought that Josh had been doing a good job. And he listed all the different things that had taken place during the previous three months and where we were. And so I think at the end of that, this is part of his contract, as we move forward in this, this contract year, that we have a quarterly review. And then he gets a pay increase based on that, that review of being positive. And I think that, there were four board members there at the time, and we had positive things to say. So we were, unless someone, other, the other board members wanted that.
So just to clarify, that's not a pay raise every quarter that he gets a review?
No, no.
It's just coming out of probationary period?
It's probationary period. That's correct. That's correct. And, and I think the, the other nice thing that came about because of this, and I know that when we were in contract negotiations with Josh, this came up within the board of having a quarterly review. And I think it's been a positive thing. And even though, as we move through this year, I perceive the board wanting to do a, continue to do a quarterly executive session with our, our, our lake manager. It opens up communication. It has done a lot of positive things for keeping on track for where we want to go. So. Did any other board members have any comments about that, or want to make?
No, I, I agree with your summary. That, that is quite positive. We're impressed with the job that you're doing, Josh.
Thanks, Brian.
Okay. Next, we looked at the statutes in section. We found that we need to make a resolution to utilizing the funds we had initially set aside to, to help Salmon Drift Creek Watershed Council with their culvert reconstruction, when they didn't get their matching funds grant. We've then decided at the last board meeting to use those funds to purchase water quality monitoring equipment that we have. So we need to make a resolution as a board with regard to that. So I will go ahead and read that resolution, and we will move forward with that. Resolution 2017-08, usage of fish and water improvement funds, excuse me, fish and wildlife improvement funds. Be it resolved that the Board of Directors of the Devils Lake Water Improvement District hereby authorizes the usage of $20,000 of funds reserved in the fish and wildlife category for the purchase of approved water quality monitoring equipment.
I like a motion that we approve Resolution 2017-08.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion and resolution is passed. I'm glad that did, because we've already spent the money. Next, that's not on the new business, is that the Devils Lake Water Improvement District went out for a proposal for contract for a, a lake contractor. And at the time, I think the, the, the request for proposal expired on the 20th. And at that time, there was only one contractor that applied for that, and that was BX Sexton Construction Incorporated. And so it is my recommendation that we approve the contract proposal for, with BX Sexton Construction. And at that, at that time, from that point on, when decisions come up in front of the board that have to do with a possible conflict of interest, Bill, you'll have to give your, to at least state that there's a potential conflict of interest and not participate in those types of decisions. Right?
Yeah. Well, he, he may be able to vote. There's situations in which you can't participate in discussion, but you can vote. So you just need to know what those are.
Okay.
About, yeah.
So I, I recommend that we enter into a contract with BX Sexton Construction as our lake manager?
Is that a motion?
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
How about the lake contractor instead of the lake manager?
Is that who?
That's what you said.
I'm sorry. The lake contractor, not the lake manager.
You're going to have to put myself on the
Okay.
Double dipping?
Thanks. Thanks, David.
Did you second it, Brian? I missed.
I did.
Okay.
What David said.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
I'm not sure about this one. Okay. Yeah. Aye.
Okay. We've got it. We've got three ayes. Very well. Thank you.
Hey, Bill.
Yeah, that would be great. In relationship to that, I know over the last two years, Bill has, you know, two years ago, when he was elected to the board, that he decided not, at the end of his contract for that year, in October, I believe it was, he chose to do, basically, lake contract work as a volunteer for the past two years. And he has done countless hours of, of volunteer work and saved the district many, many dollars in his help. And I really appreciate all your volunteer work, Bill. So thank you.
Good.
Do we have any other non-agenda items from the board?
Josh, just with, this is a repeat, but will you, would you remember to get the notice out that the sewer committee meeting for tomorrow is canceled, that you
That's what I was just tapping out of my cell phone a few minutes ago, a reminder. So I don't
Now that you've had so much notice.
Yeah. Yeah. I'll get it out on constant contact tonight, Brian.
Thanks.
Any additional comments or from the city, citizens present, from non-agenda or agenda items? Come forward, please. Mark Christie?
I'm putting on my other hat, which is the president of the Devils Lake Neighborhood Association. I just wanted to remind everybody of the upcoming July 3rd boat parade, that I believe starts at 7:00. And then the, following that, a great, even better than the, the last three years fireworks display that I believe starts at 9:30, out in front of Brown Bear, just like it has been the past couple of years. Hopefully, it won't be as windy as it was last year. So. And then also, for all of those who would like to attend, we have our annual, Devils Lake Neighborhood Association Annual Meeting, Saturday from 11 to noon, just right in the library here. So we invite right in the library here. So we invite all to attend that. And we'll give you a financial update and talk about some great, great things that are happening. So, and I just want to take this opportunity to thank David and Brian for their service. I know you guys have put in tireless hours and it's appreciated. So thank you for what you guys have contributed.
Yeah, thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Let's see, board comments and announcements. I do have a couple of comments and announcements. I know that both David and Brian chose not to run for reelection this year. And I believe, David, how many years have you served on the board? Seven?
Eight.
Eight. And Brian, 10?
Kevin, thank you.
And I want to tell you how much I appreciate working with both of you over these last three years. And I hope that you will continue to be involved. I know the aeration project you've both put a lot of time into, plus many other things on the lake. And I know that as a board member, I appreciate your knowledge and catching me on the things that I may miss or misspeak about. But I have an award from the board that we'd like to give each of you.
I had those, a box of chocolates sitting there.
No chocolates. Can't eat that.
Well, thanks, Ken.
Thank you very much. It's been my honor and pleasure to serve the community and the lake associate, the district for all these years. I plan to still be involved. I've told you that before.
Good, good.
It's also been a pleasure and a learning experience. And I'll continue to be involved going forward, so.
Great. Well, thank you both.
Thanks a lot, you guys. Appreciate it.
If there's nothing else from the board, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you both. Are you guys going to come over?
Yeah, you all pumped up.
Good.
Sure, for you.
Okay, good. Better call my wife.